Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate you folks that we've asked them over.
Dan, I lost you, buddy.
Hear me? Are you there?
Yeah, I hear you now.
All right.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah.
Might have been a connection. I'm talking to the microphone, so you can hear us. We'll all try to speak into the phone, so you can hear us or into the microphone.
Yeah.
But we're gathered here to talk about a little business that we're going to have to take up, winding up the fiscal year after we have already thought we had completed the the budget, the budget and for the next coming fiscal year, but it looks like that we've got to go back and address an issue. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I am going to ask Commissioner Larry Johnson to do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Johnson?
Dan, thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to thee in prayer this morning, thanking thee for that we're all able to wake up, be as healthy and strengthened as we are, thankful for those in attendance. Thank thee, Father in heaven, for our blessings that were sometimes we take for granted. Yes, now that will be with us during this time as we sit down as the board that we can have discernment and common sense and other things that we take good county's business. Thankful for all of our county employees, especially today, we recognize the sheriff's department with us and thank them for all of their duty and keep them safe and all they do. These things we ask and pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Again, I kind of alluded to the fact we're here to clean up a little business that was not addressed at our last budget meeting for this new coming fiscal year. Today's the last day of June and the 23 fiscal year. And we have a little item that's popped up that we're going to have to address. And that's what's constituted a special call to meeting. And but to that, since I didn't call the meeting and because I think the county staff recommended that one be called. I'm going to ask you, Laura Neely, the finance officer with Surrey County Government, if you will, just come forward and give us a little bit of reason why you think we needed to have this meeting, why we're here, and maybe give us a little timeline in whatever format you would like to do so. Maybe just bring a little clarity to it. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, Eddie, can you hear me?
Eddie, can you hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank.
I can.
First of all, I would like to just thank each of you for gathering together for this on such short notice. Um, I know this is a weird situation. Um, the primary purpose of this special meeting is to present to you guys budget amendment number 16. This budget amendment requests an increase of $258,000 in the county jail budget for professional services medical and an increase of general fund and encumbered balance of the same amount. Due to the uniqueness of this situation in which a budget amendment has been requested on the last day of this fiscal year, I think it's necessary to provide you guys with a brief synopsis of what led us to this and the amount. So the following is a timeline of events that occurred over the past week or so. On June 21st, Finance received notice from a local vendor regarding an unpaid claim for inmate medical care at the county jail. On that same day, Finance reached out to Prime Healthcare and Southern Health Partners to inquire about the outstanding claim and was informed that the sheriff's office had not yet returned the approval or denial form for the claim. Finance asked whether this was the only claim outstanding and was told that there were additional ones pending approval or denial from the sheriff's office. Then Finance requested a copy of notification from Southern Health Partners, the sheriff's office about the claims, and received the following dates of notices from Southern Health Partners. On November 17th, January 16th, and April 6th, Southern Health Partners sent notice to the jail nurse of claims. Their process is that the nurse on site is responsible for hand delivering claims to jail administration for approval or denial of claims. That's their standard process. That's what they said. On May 3rd, Southern Health Partners again sent notice of the outstanding claims to the sheriff's office. Then on June 26th, after we knew about these outstanding invoices, a meeting was held to discuss the outstanding claims and determine which we were responsible for paying. Um, and that needed to be approved by jail administration for payment. Members of administration, finance, and the sheriff's office were in attendance. Jail administration was then asked to provide the approved claims to Finance um, the next morning, on the morning of the 27th, so we could get those sent to um, Southern Health Partners for payment. The total of the outstanding medical claims presented to Finance for payment was $265,075.87. Of this amount, um, $7,891.63 were claims for May and June of this fiscal year that were already accounted for in their operating budget. For this reason, Finance is requesting a budget amendment of $258,000 to cover the remaining outstanding claims.
All right, uh, gentlemen, um, I think because we're going to have short business here, um, we have time. We've heard the finance director give the timeline of why we're here, why she thinks we need to be here. And uh, I'm going to give you opportunity to ask any questions for clarity. Commissioner Marion, start with you.
Uh, yes, um, it says here that uh, Southern Health Partners sent a notice to the jail nurse of claims. Who is the, who was the jail nurse of claims that uh?
Um, that it would be the jail nurse on site, um, whoever works, whoever's working on site that day. That's my understanding, but I don't know who that person is.
But Laura, we assume that is a Southern Health.
It's a Southern Health Partners employee.
And the protocol for translating those or transferring those kind of messages heretofore would have been, what did they tell you? They would send it to their employee and their employee was to do what with that message?
They email it to the nurse that works on site at the jail. And then they said that nurse is responsible for hand delivering it to jail administration for payment.
That's what they said.
That's what they said.
Okay.
Okay, was that followed through with?
We do not know. We cannot confirm that. We do not know.
Can anyone from the sheriff's department confirm that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, let's do that in this order and then when we get that question down, we'll get them up here and we'll ask them. Is that all right? And Mr. Goins, go ahead and ask your questions or comments. You got any more questions, Mark?
No, that's, I just wanted.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let him speak to that. That'll be fair. I just wanted to go through this round, get a question. It's kind of confined here. Go ahead.
Is that their protocol is just to deal with the sheriff's office and not, and not with the county? And since we're
Yes.
responsible, looks like we would be, we'd be, we would be copied in on that email.
We um, we have now requested moving forward that we are notified of claims, so that Finance also is aware.
Do we know if, I mean, we're going to figure that because we own microphone here. I want, when we get some of you guys up, I'd like for it to be in the microphone. So Commissioner Harris can hear you and all that kind of stuff be on record. But uh, going forward, we'll talk about a plan. And so, but the protocol has been Southern Health would call their employee on our job site here at our Surrey County Detention Center. And that protocol has been they would then email it to whoever they were told to. Or maybe you said hand delivered in some cases.
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll get into whether that happened or not here in a little bit. I think that's all I've got right now. Commissioner Johnson, you got anything for Laura?
Uh, it, it sounds like to me that my concern and question has already been answered, Mr., Mr. Vice Chairman.
All right.
About who's responsible for this.
Okay. Um, okay, then Commissioner Marion, what is your question and to whom back in the audience that uh, you wanted to dig into a little bit?
Yeah, any, anyone from the sheriff's department that um, that can refer back to these dates and who maybe was on duty or?
Sheriff, do you, do you want to select somebody to come up or all three of you want to come up? Okay, come, thank you, sir. Okay, Eddie, we have the Honorable High Sheriff here with us, Steve Hite, and Chief Deputy Larry Lowe and the Honorable Lieutenant Randy Shelton with the Detention Center standing here at the podium. So let us know if we came here on, and uh, go ahead, Mark, with your question.
Oh, yeah, you know, it just refers, it says, so the first one, um, 11/17/22, "Surrey, Southern Health Partners Sent Notice to the Jail Nurse of Claims. Nurse on site is responsible for hand delivering claims to jail administration for approval, denial of claims."
Yes, sir.
If that followed through.
And I'm going to let Lieutenant, uh, Jail Administrator Lieutenant Shelton address that. Just made, I do want to, uh, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair and Commission. Um, I appreciate you letting us get, give us this opportunity to speak. Uh, I do regret that all this has happened, uh, but uh, we're, we're going to deal with it. And uh, but uh, I have talked to Lieutenant Shelton about that, and that is not the normal protocol. Uh, they're usually emailed. They don't usually get hand delivered uh, by a nurse on staff or anything, but you can address that.
Yeah, I, I talked to Lieutenant Jenkins and he said he didn't receive from the nurse any of those bills. I think there's a couple of different dates. They said they sent it. He said he didn't get any of those. I haven't got any of those. The first one that was emailed to me was at May 3rd, I think was the date on it. So those previous, I have no idea.
But you did get notice of these bills that constituted $265,000 worth of unpaid balances. Uh, at least by May the 3rd, you did have them. You did get them sent to you or emailed to you or handled.
There was Denise had called me about it and asked me, and I went back in my email. There was one sent to me. I don't remember it, but obviously it was on my email.
So that email came on May the 3rd, you said?
That's correct, May 3rd.
Okay.
I guess, and why was that not forwarded that that, I, I just, for me, 10,000, 20,000, oops, 267,000 is a, is a big old deal.
That you, you can go back with my email. Every bill I've got, I have forwarded. That one I can't answer for. I don't know why. Cause, cause all the rest out of my head and it didn't come.
We had five meetings. We had five meetings after that. We could have, we could have fixed that in the budget and not had to be here today to do that. Uh, and that's, that's the concerning thing for me is doing what I did for a living for so many years. If, you know, something like that popped up, I'd, oh, you know, it would, it would have been forwarded to somebody above me. To more than one person, and I guess that's my concern is it needs to go to more than one person. It should go to the sheriff. It should go to the jail administrator. It should go to the chief deputy. It should go to the county. We all should be in this boat together instead of one person getting it number one. But if that one person got it, it should go out to more than one person. Uh, that's just my, that's my take on it.
I agree.
I was going to ask Lieutenant Shelton, you, you said when Denise, y'all talked, you looked back and you, you saw it had been, had it sent to you, had been sent to you on May the 3rd. Did you recall having read that there was going to be a sum as large as $267,000? Have you, had you read that email?
I do not. That email is not like the normal bill that come in. It's a totally different sheet and all that when I went back and looked at it. So.
Generally, I know I was going to tell you, I talked with Lieutenant Shelton about that. And uh, he said that uh, when he looked back at it, it was a whole different format. It was like a cover letter or something. He normally, when they email to him, it's, he opens it up and it's a bill. And he just forwards it to three people and within the agency and uh, generally. But on this one, he said, didn't, he didn't think it was a bill. He didn't know what it was. He didn't read it. You know, we, we wish we had a, and it included uh, you know, bills for, for three years in, in there. And it was a huge amount. If we looked at it, of course, we would afford it to you guys and it would have already been taken care of.
Yeah.
Uh, I totally agree with that.
And going back to what Commissioner Goins said, yeah, it was an unfortunate incident. And, you know, we're not trying to make a big deal out of it by having a meeting here. I mean, according to North Carolina general statutes, according to the guidance from agencies like the LGC at the state and folks like Dale Falwell's office that looks and sees how government does their business and just good business and good government protocol. Typically, when you have a, uh, you know, when you got a quarter of a million dollars or a little north of that, uh, that, that you guys knew about four or five weeks before we voted to finalize our budget. It'd been nice if we could have known that, so we could have incorporated it into our budget. So we all agree. That's why we're here trying to go back and fix it. And, and what you're saying is that system got broken somewhere there in the flow of information. And so what I think I want to say is we're here today to, to, to say that we noticed that and it's, we don't, we didn't want to be here fixing a quarter of a million dollar uh, variance on our budget that we passed. And we've got to, we've got to go back now and dip into the taxpayers' savings fund and find over a quarter of a million dollars to justify the budget that we just passed because we didn't take into account those outstanding bills. So that, we take that as a big deal. Uh, it's almost like we're having to have two budget meetings. But we are addressing a couple of things here. One, how it happened, and more importantly, how it can't happen again. And how we hope that our county and you guys will get together and maybe not just do a bill when Southern Health sends it, but every time they send one, it all set off a chain of events that Laura knows about it, maybe Denise knows about it, maybe Chris and Sandy gets copied on it. Everybody knows about it. And then maybe next year, when we're doing a budget, we won't, we won't be surprised and who knows, it could be, it could have been worse. If it had been five or six million dollars, I, I mean, uh, I don't know if I'd have showed up today. Mr. Johnson, you go right ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to leave you out. I was just coming down the line here. You, you make your comments.
For my own satisfaction.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my understanding that the jail nurse is employed by Southern Health, is that correct? And that nurse, whoever it is on duty, they're supposed to send to who? These bills to be approved? Or that they to be, it's up to the sheriff's department or the detention center to, okay? Is that a, is that a correct statement?
But that's not the way they do it, is that not?
Okay, well, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, they would like these last two.
Come up to the microphone if you will, Randy, so Eddie can hear.
The last couple of years, they would have took them to Jenkins, where 18, 19 months. And years ago, they used to do that protocol, pre-COVID. And they would bring me the statement. I would go to Angie Marion would be involved. The nurse would be involved and we would verify that the inmate went out for medical treatment.
Right.
Once that was done, then we would sign off on the bill. It would go to, it's Christine now, probably Miranda and some of them, Amy Sullivan. They would do their coding over how that works, take it to the chief or whoever's over the finance. They would sign off and send it to finance. That was not done on these deals.
That was not done. Now, my question is, who's responsible that they're not done? Was that the nurse? She just didn't, they didn't do it?
I talked to Ms. Marion and to Jenkins yesterday, and they don't recall ever being brought these, these brought to their attention. And there's no paperwork showing where they.
No paperwork showing? And is it, so now the paperwork has showed up, been everything's delinquent and whatever. And here it is. So is that a correct statement? That the job wasn't done by uh, Southern Health employee? Is that a correct statement?
That's my stance 100% is we didn't.
That 100% statement, okay.
That protocol was broken, but we have acknowledged that there was an email received as late as May the 3rd, which was four or five weeks before we had time to address it. And he's acknowledged that today. And I will say, I appreciate that acknowledgement. I thank you. Because we're trying to figure out where this derailed. Uh, and, and he's acknowledged that he did get the email on May the 3rd.
Okay, well, but still, yet we, we look to, we hire people, we hire a company and their employees to best address our needs for the detention center as far as the personal health of the inmates. Is that all just the inmates there? They don't, they don't work on, they don't help with the detention offer. I mean, that's our, okay. Just for the inmates there for their well-being and do whatever they got to do for their medical stuff. And the, and uh, so there, there was a failure from what I hear. And y'all confirmed it 100%. There was a failure on Southern Health Company, their employees do not adequately do what they're supposed to be doing. And that is, and by all means, I know y'all have a whole lot. But still, yet uh, there's, there's got to be a trail. I mean, uh, naturally, we don't think to, you know, and it's just an unfortunate experience. But we, we got to have, like Commissioner Goins says, we, we've got to have a set routine, Sheriff. Uh, that, you know, if nothing else, once every inmate has to receive something outside the detention or wherever that's, that we got to, that is going to be a bill forward, it's got to be okayed by, I would.
Dan, can you hear me? Dan, I lost connection somehow. Dan? Dan? Diane, can you hear me? Diane? Can you hear me?
Eddie? Calling Eddie, talking, calling Eddie, calling Eddie. All right.
Okay, so um, I'll kind of start over just in case. Okay. Um, so Larry and Randy and I are meeting after this. Um, and we're going to talk about the plan going forward. Um, I sent an email to Martha yesterday as of in the morning. We're going to be setting up a group email to avoid this from happening again. There will be several people in that chain um, that will receive bills. I have spoke to Prime. Southern will be out of the relationship come July 1st. The only thing they're going to be billing for is their base plan. All of the bills will go through Prime, which will make that much simpler. So no matter who our third party is, which in the first six months, as you guys know, will be Southern. Um, after that, it'll be whoever we decide after we send out the RFP. Um, but Prime will be doing all the scrubbing, paying and everything. So that'll be simple. I have asked Southern to provide us with a monthly report starting next month of every inmate they send out of the facility, where they send them to, what they send them for. And because I think that'll judge whether they're doing that right or not, because we can look at that and Sam can look at that and say, okay, that maybe is something that could have been in-house. I think it'll give us a picture there. I've asked Prime to give us a monthly report of everything they pay. Because right now what they get is the bills, but what they're saying is, and I understand what they're saying, they don't really know what bills are still out there because we don't really see, because the bills go directly to Prime to be scrubbed, paid. And then if the providers don't get paid, we don't know it unless one of them calls us, which is what happened here and says, hey, we're not getting our money. Where's our money? So that was sort of what raised the issue here. So I've asked both parties to give us monthly printouts so that someone can look at them and say, okay, here was the bills, here's what we got, here's what we pay Prime, and here's what they pay for us.
Can I ask a question too?
Sure.
When the scrub, when they scrub, I mean, should this be done in a timely manner, not 18 months, not two years?
Um, it is. That, the, the, the holdup there has been Southern Health Partners, not Prime. Prime has, and I have those, they're in the file back there. Where's Prime scrubs those and sends them is Southern Health Partners is immediately after they receive them, and that's done very quickly.
Denise, will you explain just for the public consumption here, what scrubbing means to Prime? What, what, tell us, tell us what they're doing when they scrub a bill?
Okay, so when they receive a bill, they do kind of just exactly like what Medicare does. They look at the bill and they say, okay, $150,000 for a x-ray is ridiculous. Um, so we're going to, you know, this is what we legally do. And then they look at all the legal avenues. And for an example, one of the bills was $107,000, wound up being $34,000.
Yeah.
And that's a legal scrub. They're not taking out things they can't, and then what they.
And they get a percentage of it.
They get a percentage of it.
So they work on a percentage to cut those bills down and negotiate with those primary caregivers like Rex Hospital, Baptist Hospital.
Correct.
Hospital, no.
Or Northern or every, like their locals. Um, and what happens is, and this is where the process gets convoluted a little bit, you know, okay, let's say I'm, I'm an inmate and I go to Northern Hospital just to use them as. Okay, let's say I'm, I'm an inmate and I go to Northern Hospital, just to use them as an example. If Northern doesn't bill for two months, then that's two months where it didn't get billed. So that's not anything that we can control. If it goes to Prime and Prime scrubs it and it takes them three weeks to scrub it, then, then it goes to Southern. Well, then Southern sits there and says, okay, wait a minute, now I got to get permission for anything over five thousand from the sheriff's office. And then, so it, it's, it's really a beast for everybody. So the good news is going forward, July first, it'll be a much simpler process. That's the good news. Um, and I'm glad in a way that this all came about, because I don't think any of us really realized how much of a monster inmate medical care really was. And it's really only getting worse because the more inmates we have, the more medical care goes up, the more, you know, all of that happens. I mean, it's just, it's a beast really. But like, like you say, it's important, and I'm not saying the sheriff's department needs to hear this, you know? Because it is important that they have someone who is on top of, and that's why I'm asking for reports, because there's no way to know that, you know? Um, if you don't know what medical bills are getting billed and you don't know which ones are getting paid, you know, all we know is what we're paying. We get the invoice and we know we're paying it, and that's all we know. We don't really know, I made them prove it, but we did not really know whether Southern was actually paying our third parties on our behalf.
I know, a couple of years ago, neighboring county got a bill, they, they got a bill for a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I know, and I got, I talked to a commissioner from, from a neighboring county, they got a bill for a million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's a big deal.
It's, it's very expensive. Do we have Eddie back? Eddie, I, I called on you a couple of times and I couldn't get you to respond there. So we know we must have lost the communication. Do you have any question or comment to anybody from the sheriff's department? Anybody from finance or anyone here today? Would you like to chime in on this issue?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I did get cut off for a minute there, but, but I'm back. Uh, and thank you, Martha. No, I, I think it's been fairly well covered. Uh, you know, my concern is just, uh, going forward that we have a process in place that, um, you know, solidifies the checks and balances, uh, for the sheriff's department and the county board of commissioners and, uh, and for the taxpayers and citizens of Surrey County. So it works the way it should. And, uh, and I think that should be the goal here today.
Okay, anybody else?
All I have.
No, no one else. All right, thanks. We got a motion on the floor. We got a second. We've had plenty of discussions. So I'm going to call for a vote to pass this amendment for two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sir? Okay, you or I? Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Harris, uh, I, Chris or somebody let me know this. I, I was out of the loop on it, but because we are meeting today, we were going to clean up other, some other little business uh, about a, uh, unfilled, uh, community's college board of trustees. Do you, can you add light to that? And would you, would you share with the board what, where you are on that?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Commissioner Tucker. Um, sometime, um, in May, I believe it was, Tim Dockry, uh, left Community College know that he was not going to seek reappointment, uh, to the college board. He is one of the trustees that we appoint. And we appreciate Tim Dockry's service. He was an excellent, uh, community college trustee, a great citizen. And, uh, we were very fortunate to have Tim on the board, uh, the amount of time that we did. Um, since that time, uh, I spoke with all five commissioners, um, about several possibilities going forward uh, to replace Mr. Dockry. And, um, I think at the end of the day, um, I did speak with these commissioners individually on an individual basis. And, um, we have, um, come to a consensus to appoint, uh, Ms. Kim Bruce to, uh, replace Tim Dockry on the board of trustees at the community college. Uh, Kim is a great Surrey County girl, a community college graduate. Um, she is a graduate of Gardner Webb, as well as I think she has a master's degree from Appalachian State University. Um, she's a, um, outstanding citizen, very involved in her community. And, uh, I would like to recommend to the board that, uh, we appoint, uh, Ms. Kim Bruce to, uh, the Surrey Community College Board of Trustees.
All right, Commissioner Harris, with that said, and if we can clean it up and if it's time to fill that role, I'm going to go ahead and ask, uh, since you sit on the community college board, if you or anyone here would like to make the, that motion, I would entertain a motion to make that appointment today.
I don't think I can make that motion since I'm calling in, um, if someone else wants to do it.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Kim Bruce to the Surrey County, excuse me, Surrey Community, uh, Board of Trustees.
Yep, and we have a motion, Commissioner Harris, if you heard that. So now I'm looking for a second to appoint Kim Bruce, a second from, um, Commissioner Mark Marion. Any discussion, gentlemen? No discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the appointment of Kim Bruce, Surrey Community College Board of Trustees, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
None opposed? All right. Uh, I think that concludes our business. And we're going, Commissioner Johnson, you got anything to add here? Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, Commissioner Tucker, uh, in, in our meeting, uh, we did not approve of the agenda, uh, which is okay, in my opinion. But we have a couple of visitors, a couple of citizens here today that didn't have an opportunity. I was open forum or such.
Actually, I was going to go back and see, this gentleman wanted to speak. But I did overlook the approval of the agenda. Uh, we've already got through most of this agenda. So whether you approved it or not, do I get a motion that we approve this, uh, meeting agenda today?
I should approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, that motion and a second, any discussion? None, the, the agenda is approved. And I was actually going to say, we have a guest that sat there patiently and quietly, you, sir, and you raised your hand a couple of times and I, I didn't know how it pertained to this topic. But I'm going to ask you to come to, we don't have an open forum on the agenda, but come up to the microphone, we'll give you about a couple of minutes, see what's on.
Yes, sir, I won't take your time.
Name and phone number, please.
Uh, Ray Floyd, Edson Ray Floyd, I have my ID.
Yes, sir.
And what I'm saying is, uh.
Phone number.
Telephone number, three, three, six, three, seven, four, thirty-two, eighty-two. Three, seven, four, thirty-two, eighty-two. Uh, I've sat in on a lot of board meetings. I was a firefighter, paid firefighter in something, South Carolina. I was a paid firefighter in Myrtle Beach, back in the good days of Myrtle Beach. Lived there in the eighties. Anyway, uh, what I'm saying, I'm very impressed today is the way this was handled. I've been in some board meetings, I mean, not in board, it was set in board meetings. It was disgraceful, but I was very impressed with where y'all handled it and sheriff's department handled. Uh, and the end of the day, it don't make no difference. If it's my fault, your fault, nobody's fault. Uh, I think you've on the right track, you're going to handle things. Uh, but, but you know, really the problem being here in Surrey County, it's not the commissioners, that's the sheriff's department. It's the lack of money, the lack of revenue, the lack of funds. You see, if the sheriff's department had enough money to hire a secretary to take care of things, you know, full-time secretary, that was her job. But they don't, they don't have the funds. And that's because we don't generate the money here. To have the funds, to have a person, so you saw the thickness of the folders he brought up, you know, what they have to keep up with, along with what everything else they have to keep up with. And, uh, that's just a problem, lack of funds. Uh, I own property in something, South Carolina, a rental house, and I lived here. They jacked up my, uh, my, uh, what is it?
Taxes.
Taxes.
Had plenty of funds then, didn't they?
Huh?
They then had plenty of funds, didn't they?
I thought so, I thought so. But anyway, we just need to come up with something, bring in more taxes without hurting the old working people and.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, we deal with that issue quite often. Thank you for your time. We appreciate you coming to comment. Uh, yes, we, we do, we, we debate that tax issue all the time. And we've just spread some of the wealth over to the sheriff's department. We got about twenty other departments and we do the best we can. And thank you for your comment. Nothing, anybody else got to chime in on anything? If not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, but Commissioner Bill Goins, second from Commissioner Mark Marion. Any discussion? None, all in favor? No, one discussion?
Hope everybody has a safe and happy fourth of June.
Yeah, okay, we'll do a little comment. You got any other comment, Mr. Commissioner Marion? You, Commissioner, you're going. Mr. Johnson, any comment?
Amen.
A happy fourth to everybody. Appreciate you coming, and we are adjourned. Thank you.